Harvey, invocation?
Sure. That'd be nice.
Hello, everyone. It is Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, seven P. M. We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the invocation given by Councilman Curly, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Well, our gracious heavenly Father, we ask that you would come among us tonight, that cool heads would prevail, and the things that we do, Lord, is for our city. And we would remind ourselves of that. Lord, be with all the folks that are watching and all the folks that are here tonight, that we keep one thing in mind, that this is East Point and no better place to live. We ask these things in your name, Jesus the Living Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
All right, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Bishadlik, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bishadlik.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move right into the presentation, Sarah. Thank you.
It is now. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Frederick, and I am the Deputy Director at the Recreation Authority of Roseville in East Point. I come every few months to kind of go over our upcoming programs at the Recreation Authority and what the community should be looking forward to. All right, so I just want to do a little recap on our Big Bird Run that happened last Sunday. We had two hundred and eighty-nine runners that braved the weather last Sunday and ran in the sleet and snow. It was a really fun morning, and I believe we raffled off around twenty-four turkeys and gave six to the top winner, so it was a really fun day. One of our last few events is we have our puzzle tournament coming up on Saturday, November twenty-second, from one to four. I believe we have around six spots left for our puzzle tournament. We are doing teams up to four members for this, and it is ages sixteen and older for this, but we are partnering with the Roseville Library. And everyone's going to have the same five-hundred-piece puzzle. Also, individuals are able to bring puzzles because we're going to do a puzzle swap as well. So this is a free event. Like I said, we only have about six spots left, I checked this afternoon, so be sure to sign up before then, and then we'll email all the participants out to form the teams. And then our last event in the season is our annual VIP dance, our Very Important Person Family Dance, that's on Friday, December fifth, from six to eight-thirty at Barrister Gardens in St. Clair Shores. Every person attending will receive a banquet dinner. We've got the DJ, we've got dancing, crafts, photo opportunities, and then each child will receive a special gift to commemorate the night. And this year, the theme is Winter Wonderland. And then just as a reminder, we have our winter basketball, volleyball, and cheerleading registration coming to an end at the end of December. However, it's important to note that if you do register for winter basketball or winter volleyball by November thirtieth, you do receive fifteen dollars off per player, so that comes out to be eighty-five dollars for the season. We have registration going through the end of December, though, for those who may have forgotten to register. We do start practices up in January, and games will start at the end of the month in January. We just got our newsletters delivered in the last few days, so we have those available to be picked up. We will be bringing some over to City Hall and the libraries, and then all the local schools, mostly elementaries, will be getting those to be taken to home. You're more than welcome to stop by the Rec Center to pick up your very own copy, or it is available online. These programs run through January through April, and all program registration, aside for summer day camp, starts on Monday, December first. Those interested in summer day camp, there's information on there of when that will be available in March. And just a little quick update on... There it is. The park development that we have behind the facility at the Recreation Authority Center, it's almost complete. As you see at the bottom right-hand corner, the before, we kind of just had a few soccer fields back there that weren't really being used for any type of programming, and we had a big blank slate of what new programming we can do to bring there. So we expanded on our playground. As you see on the top right, we included some new features and included a new playground surfacing. There is a very large walking path around the whole back area, and then we added a pavilion with permanent cornhole board courts, and then we also included four pickleball courts. The project is projected to be finished by the end of this year, and we'll be doing some ribbon cutting for it in the springtime. That's all I have for our upcoming events and everything, so just be sure to go online and check out our newsletter that we'll have up very shortly.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Sarah, I'll be honest with you. When you come here once a month, you really make me happy. Well, with the folks, with the... As much as she does over there, it's incredible. She's worked all day. I'm not sure what time she came in this morning, but it might still have been dark. And so, Sarah, from my heart, and I'm sure from everybody else, thank you and God bless you.
And thank you very much. I do want to point out, too, we have others, various staff members at the Rec Authority that a lot of the stuff that I talk about, they actually plan and everything. So while I come here and talk about them and everything, we have a great group of staff that we would love for you guys all to meet and everything, so just always feel free to stop by and meet our awesome staff at the Rec Authority because we wouldn't be able to do all these programs without them as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll open the first hearing of the public. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor Council, how you doing? Cardi DeMonaco, resident of East Point. About a year and a half ago, the City Council up here voted to move forward with a three-lane project for Nine Mile, and it's on the agenda, of course, today. I hope that, you know, consideration is made. If things are changed, since it's been so long since that vote, support the three lanes and also the roundabout that has been proposed. The recent public forum that occurred was for NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, approval through M.DOT, and no comments at that time were made around the environment. Two topics, though, were brought up by many. Public safety concerns. One being, a previous police chief said he looked out his window eight hours a day, said the road diet won't work, and then fire chief, previous fire chief, said that won't be able to turn a fire truck onto Nine Mile if it's three lanes. So when everyone's saying, you know, quote-unquote, "public safety" is against the Nine Mile proposal, that's what they're referring to because that's what's been said at council meetings. And then two, the second thing is just how long will it take to drive Nine Mile? We thought about that four years ago, the City Council. When we first proposed this, we said, okay, obviously it could change traffic. We did a traffic study, and the largest change was ten seconds. Some of it was reversed, it was even faster, but I hope that, you know, we consider that, or we're going to adjust plans that'll be forty, fifty years in the city, over, you know, ten seconds difference in traffic. A lot of situations, of course, it was faster. Everyone on both sides of this issue wants businesses to succeed. I think everybody does, want to attract new businesses. This plan will do that. And we've split Nine Mile into three phases. We were originally optimistic that it'd be three years, you know, we'd be able to replace those water mains, do the construction for each phase all in one year.
Thirty seconds.
And took two years each. So the project will take the same amount of time, though, if it's three lanes, five lanes. It's going to be more construction regardless. It's City Council's responsibility to listen to the department heads, experts, and the public, but then also City Council's responsibility, make the best decision for the city using that information. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is David Deroni of Deroni Hardware, one-eight-five-six-one Nine Mile Road, business resident of East Point for thirty-five years. I'd like to congratulate councilmembers Karen Scott and Rob Baker for their landslide election victories over Cardi DeMonaco Jr. The voters made it clear they didn't need a council member that refused to listen to the will of the people. On tonight's agenda, I'm thankful that Councilmember Rob Baker added Item C under New Business, Discussion and Possible Motion on Nine Mile Phase Three. Mr. Mayor, you told me the road diet will be killed. With the overwhelming amount of residents and businesses that are opposed to it, I hope that you have had that change of heart and have decided to respect the will of the people by making a motion tonight to end the three-lane road diet plan and proceed with the five-lane plan. The sooner you can inform M.DOT, the better, so they can now get the plans sent out for bids and nail down concrete costs before they rise even more. In closing, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for the kind words and support through the process. No road diet.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Howard Robinson here. I'm living in Vanderbilt Road in Canton, Michigan. I own a property at two-three-three, four-three Corlin Avenue, and I'm having trouble getting it inspected. And let me set my timer here so I don't go over and the three minutes that's allowed it. Okay. I wrote three letters, and I could make it real short and go straight to the letter. I bought a property and closed on it on February the fourth, on a Saturday of two thousand twenty-three. I got two packages here, I can leave one. I've been in court because the tenant got kicked out, and I found out that you have to have a legal representative to evict a tenant, so I couldn't even get in my own property. I hired William Jurzak, the attorney, right across the street from the courthouse. He said you can't go in that property until the judge lets you in. I'm only bringing that history up because I'm hoping to get resolution because I feel that I'm being harassed because they want to charge me three hundred dollars in addition to the two hundred already paid for the inspection for the rental property. So I asked for the waiver. The clerk said you can have a waiver. But the three letters I got back from the building manager said, "You've owned this property since two thousand twenty-two." So I sent him a closing document from Partners Title Company. I sent him a closing statement. I sent him the quitclaim deed. I sent him the warranty deed, and he still says I have ownership of the property since two thousand twenty-two. Now, that's a whole year. I had nothing to do with the property. I got a package here that says Mark Leoni owned the property. I have it set up here so that you can see it if you need to, but it seems pretty clear to me that I went to Mount Clinton's to ask the registrar, Dean, what happened? Why is the building department having so much trouble with the history of this property? And I found, well, they said, hey, it was recorded out of sequence. I closed on the fourth, which is a Saturday. I came down with my papers on Monday, Monday or Tuesday.
You have thirty seconds.
And quitclaim the deed, and quitclaim the deed to my trust. And somehow, your building inspector, John Myers, still don't understand. I had nothing to do, no management, no rental property in two thousand twenty-two. So what I'm asking for is somebody to help me get the waiver I deserve, have my building inspected because the two hundred dollars has already been paid, and try to resolve this issue. I am not wrestling with it.
Thank you. Can you actually leave your phone number or contact with someone over there?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First thing I want to... Oh, Walter Kubiak, East Point resident. First thing I want to do tonight is I want to apologize to the mayor for the way I acted and the things that I said the last time I was here. I should have never came here. I was still reeling from the pneumonia that I had, and I was on medication. Should have stayed home, but I didn't. It was kind of like a last-stitch effort to try and kill the road diet, but all I did is I made an ass of myself, and I said things to the mayor and did things I shouldn't have. So I am terribly, I am really sorry for everything that transpired that evening. I want to congratulate our new City Councilperson, Ms. Scott. I am super happy that you made it. You made a lot of people very happy, including me. All I ask of you is to remember that the people don't want the road diet. Number two, I want you to listen to the will of the people. Cardi did not, and that's why you're sitting there. Mr. Baker, I am super happy that you made it, and I want to apologize for not talking you up the last two times I stood here. It was because I didn't know you had to run for your seat, and I didn't. I finally found out when I opened up my ballot and saw your name. And so I voted twice for you. Not really. My wife and I both voted for you, but I'm very, very glad that you got back in. Now, I came away with one thing because of this election. There is a God, and He had something to do, as far as I'm concerned, with the way this election turned out. Three people did not listen to us for over a year. We came up here and talked and talked about the road diet, and they didn't listen. They virtually threw us under us. Well, God listened, and when the election happened, He decided to let the people of East Point win. Plus, I personally believe that He loves the people of East Point. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Vicki Brooks, and I am a former employee of the City of East Point. On September second, two thousand twenty-five, a budget amendment was submitted and approved, reducing my wages by twenty-five thousand dollars annually, resulting in a layoff. Part of that time, I made the council aware in a six-page memorandum of the discriminatory and harassing behavior perpetrated by interim city manager Elki Doom against me and other employees and job applicants in violation of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. During the meeting, Mayor Kleinfeld, you announced that administration and council identified an outside agency who would investigate my allegations presented against interim city manager Doom. At the October twenty-first, twenty-five City Council meeting, City Attorney Albright reported that the investigation was concluded, and there were no findings of state or federal violations. I would like to submit to the City Council that a fair and impartial investigation was not conducted for the following reasons. Testimony from all parties impacted and clearly identified to the third-party company by the name of Greco Law was not secured as evidenced by Councilbakers and others who were directly involved but never interviewed. Number two, as stated by City Attorney Albright, the third party was secured through the recommendation of the city labor attorney, Brandon Foyer. This is a gross conflict of interest as Labor attorney Brandon Foyer has a pre-existing financial relationship with the accused, with the city and the interim city manager Doom. Labor attorney Foyer was defend, has defended Ms. Doom's activities on several occasions in the past. Of course, this council has no obligation to make the detailed results of the investigation public, but I am requesting that this council vote to do so in order that anyone impacted can ensure that the investigation was completed without bias or motivations of self-preservation. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I was hoping to never have to speak about the road diet again, but since it was brought up again, I just... I've read all of the traffic studies, the ones that were done in two thousand twenty-one. There were two of them, and I read the one that we did last year for just this phase-three part of it. It clearly states that, yes, there would be not much measurable decrease in speed, arterial speed, which, in my mind, what is the point of traffic calming if people are just going to drive as fast? Five lanes or three lanes? The problem with all of these studies is the backups, the queuing at the intersections. When we were going to do a road diet for all of Nine Mile, when the traffic studies that were done in two thousand twenty-one, there was queuing of up to eleven hundred feet at some intersections. They went back and revised the traffic study again, did some tweaking at the request of Councilman DeMonaco. Still came back with intersections at nine hundred feet backup. This is the problem. This is what Public Safety Director George Rohe was talking about. When he can see out his window that cars are backed up even with five lanes, and with three lanes, if you're talking eleven hundred feet, they would not be able to get out of their driveway. This was discussed by two fire chiefs, Nick Sage and Brian Marquardt, and actually, the fire chief from Ferndale came and did a drive down Nine Mile and again felt that a road diet was not appropriate in that area. So, you know, we're just twisting facts. It's all there. All of these City Council meetings are on video. You can go back to August third of two thousand twenty-one and August seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one, and you can hear what these people are saying, and you can see the traffic studies. They had a whole diagram showing cars backing up from Grashit all the way to Grove. It took three traffic lights for some of these cars to get through if there were a road diet there. The people have spoken. All of our experts here in East Point have spoken. You know, planning experts outside the city in different states, different countries, they don't live here, they don't see what we use the road for, they have no idea what we're talking about here. You've had city administration, residents, businesses repeatedly, again and again and again, in every iteration, tell you that this road diet is not what they want. They don't feel that it's safe, they don't feel that it's any benefit at all to them. And, you know, we had to have an election to go to that extreme for people's voices to be heard, and I hope that you resolve this tonight so we can move forward and heal as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Council. Mary Hellrave, East Point resident. I too thought we were done with the road diet, but I guess just the magic of hopefulness, it didn't appear. At any rate, how many times are we going to do this? And how much is it going to cost in anxiety and business loss and trauma? Because there are people really tired of this. So I would hope that tonight would be the end of it. Additionally, I wanted to talk about one word, and people can take it however they want. I've gone beyond the point of caring what people think. And the word is hypocrisy. Basically, when people are saying and doing one thing in public and in private, they're doing the entire opposite, trying to make themselves... opposite, trying to make themselves look one way when they are not. We've got a lot of that going on in this city, and I don't understand how we could ever come to a place where we can have unity and become a family town if we cannot be honest with ourselves. And I'm going to come back a little later in the second hearing of the public and elaborate on that, being honest with itself. Because there are people who don't want to talk about racism, and I believe it's because they don't want to admit that they are. We have to have conversations in order to get beyond the barriers and the challenges that we face. If we're not willing to have those conversations, it means that we're not really interested in solving problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Larry Edwards, resident of East Point. I'd like to first start off by saying I'd like to thank Councilman Rob Baker, Sarah Lucino, and Mayor Michael Kleinfeld for reaching out to me in regard to the position of the managers, city managers' duty in regard to city clerk for trying to enlighten me and inform me of how it's set up and what have you. So I'd just like to thank you. But also, we have a clear example of a person that was a city council that's been relinquish of his duties and position, and I too feel like everyone else. I thought it was done over with and never to be even reminded and brought up again, but evidently that's not the case. But I'm not surprised by it, because this is a clear example of what we've been dealing with for, out of the 12 years or 11 years, I know eight of the years that it's been this way and what have you. Another clear example was in the last special meeting that we had, gave another clear example when Ms. Carol Reed, I believe her name is, happened to just speak out in regard to something that Mr. Monaco was speaking at the time, and his, first time I'd seen her, and I didn't get a clear vision. It was from the back of his wife, and she blurred it out, and DeMonico, Cardy, DeMonico, he immediately reacted to it as if he lost his composure completely. But you've seen the dictator come out clearly. And when he said, when he said to the facts and everything, "I'm talking," and she immediately responded to it. So there's a lot of things that have been said in regard to her as well, but I'm beginning to believe and thinking more that it's more or less probably the other way around. And then he and I in the public, as a person said, to disguise themselves of who they are, because a lot of things have been hidden and been backdoored and deals and complaints and all this put on people with no evidence, no reasons. In fact, just fictitious things that's just in one's mind. And so we have to, I think East Point is voting the right way to get rid of no road diet.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Council. I did not know that the road diet was on the agenda tonight. I guess it's a good thing I'm here. The thing that has come, it has come off so badly, the road diet in this city, that I don't believe we can settle for having a council in charge of money to do, to put in agendas that appeals to them, but it seems nobody else. I believe the way we're going to have to go with this is we're going to have to take this to Lansing, and while we have a Republican majority in the House and the Senate, we are going to have to put, we're going to have to make sure that there are rules or laws or whatever you want to call them, that this money goes out, and it can't be abused like it's been abused here. You know, we've talked about, somebody brought up MDOT. MDOT, Matt Hall says, the House Speaker, says 80% of MDOT works from home. They work about two hours a day, and we don't want our decisions here in East Point made by bureaucrats sitting in pajamas in front of their computers at home. So we are going to have to put restrictions on earmarks and all this kind of stuff so that this money goes out. It goes out with restrictions. It's just not monopoly money to some city council, not only you, everybody, because we have more people in more cities wanting to do road diets. They want to put them on Van Dyke, for crying out loud. Van Dyke's a beautiful road. You just fix it, and you're fine. Why are we, we're talking about the way to the auto plants is nuts, three-lane roads and narrowed-down stuff. This is all agenda. There's no policy here. People have agendas, and we have to make sure that councils like this are restricted in the ways they can use earmarks. And I believe citizens, we're going to have to take this to Lansing.
You have 30 seconds.
This, this whole, this is now what, a two-year process or something, that we've been, you know, fighting this? We had to remove Mr. DeMonico just to make a point about a road diet? You know, I'm looking for citizens to actually go to their representatives. We obviously can't do that in East Point. We have State Senator Kleinfeld, who is in on this thing. So we can't do that here, but that needs to be done, and that's where we need to go. We need restrictions on a Lansing on earmarks.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Let's talk about specism. November's murder for deer and turkeys under the guise antiquated traditions that are null and void of compassion and respect for nature and her animals. Thankfully, the baby boomer generation is aging out in the DNR. More foe than friend to wildlife has struggled to replace the decreasing number of hunters. According to DNR Cadillac Wildlife biologist Vernon Richardson, the last 25 years, we've seen a decrease in the total number of firearm deer hunters and deer hunters in general in the state of Michigan. It's not just a trend here. It's a trend all across the United States. We don't have the same rate of hunting in the younger generations to make up for the loss of baby boomers, more who will no longer hunt 10 years from now in the hunting population, end quote. Well, I'm sure younger generations, directly and indirectly impacted by mass school shootings, have zero desire to be subjected to gunfire in hidden areas of the woods. Ninety-five, or I'm sorry, 97% of hunters are white, while the fastest-growing races in the U.S. are Hispanic and black. Less than 3% of those races hunt. So, hunting is soon on its way to becoming extinct, and the DNR never wants to admit that around 1914, the deer were on the verge of extinction due to overhunting. As for the poor turkeys being overbred, their body weight is so heavy, their legs are crushed and not being able to support their bodies. They basically have no legal protections for, from animal cruelty. Animals are supposed to be rendered unconscious before slaughter. That doesn't apply to turkeys and chickens. The electric baths that are supposed to render them unconscious doesn't always work, only to leave them fully conscious while their throats are slit by sharp blades. And if missed, then they're scalded to death, and bats meant to remove their feathers. So the turkey carcasses you eat on Thanksgiving was once a docile, gentle, living, sentient being deprived of fresh air, sunshine, nutritious food, and their family. Yes, animals have families. They love just as much as we love our families. They were brutally tortured to death in the slaughterhouses that now lies dead on your plate. There's nothing to be grateful about in supporting an animal's deaths in the most brutal form of animal cruelty. So, a lot of people say I'm against animal cruelty. Put your money where your mouth is. Stop eating them. Whether they fly, live in the water, or walk on the land, stop wearing them. Stop buying products tested on them. Just stop. Stop the cruelty. You can do it. You have the money. You can do it. Show compassion over cruelty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right. Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to, well, we have no minutes to approve scheduled hearings or unfinished business or reports from, I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. Well, approval of minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, what? A motion for what?
Approval of the minutes. Kim, I didn't see any in the
There's nothing in here?
Agenda, so that's why.
Okay.
Am I wrong? Okay. All right. We'll move on to reports from administration. Ms. Doom is not here. Do we have anyone who wanted to give?
Yeah, Ms. Doom could not make it this evening, and I communicated with her, and she had nothing specific to report for her report. I would like to mention that the last day for compost will be December 12th, so the week of the eighth-year garbage pickup. That would be the last day for compost. An update on, let's call it the tale of parking lots. Civic Point, the construction started there and then came to a screeching halt when the lighting in that parking lot was determined to be DTE-owned. We have a work order in. They have to remove the lights and run some new cabling, but until that happens, that project is on hold. The Memorial Parking Lot Basketball Court, the vendor has gotten behind on some other jobs. The chances of getting to our job before the asphalt plant shut down are shrinking by the day. This may end up being a spring project when it's all said and done. And the only good news is the Urban Garden Parking Lot is under construction. The excavation has been completed. The base is in, and the forms are already set. I expect them to be pouring sometime later this week. And that was, oh, and on a side note, personal note, I found humorous. There was a puzzle tournament, because I just spent four weeks putting together the most evil puzzle I've ever had, and Sunday I had a fire in the fireplace and burned that puzzle. So I couldn't think of anybody I didn't like enough to pass it off to. But anyways, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Albright? All right, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. After last week's meeting, I did make the revisions to the proposed city manager contract and forwarded that to Mr. Mattis, and I'm pleased to report that he did accept the terms offered by the city. That contract has been fully executed, and Mr. Mattis's first day will begin on November 30th. Second thing, Mayor, is I know there's been interest in adding a second hearing of the public to special meetings. Currently, the city bylaws only provide for one hearing of the public, and so earlier today I did make that change. I know that Councilmember Curly had also expressed interest in that, and if the council wants, I can put that in ordinance form and have it on the next city council agenda for possible first reading, if there's interest in that.
Good.
Sure. Okay. And the third thing is, yesterday I met with Ms. Holman regarding the policy to cover individuals that are covered by the ADA, to allow them to appear during hearings of the publics remotely. And we had a good conversation, and I do have the starting of a draft, and I hope to have that completed here in the next couple of weeks and bring before council for review, consideration, and possible approval. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Albright?
Yeah, I have one thing. In regards to the bylaws for the second hearing of the public for special meetings, I think there has to be some language either added or taken out in regards to the time limit. I think it has to be indicated for a three-minute time limit, just like consistent with our current meetings, or, what is this, section 2-21, there's a last sentence in paragraph three that says, "All residents of the city or persons attending the special meeting should have a reasonable opportunity to be heard during one, two hearings of the public," and I think that would have to come out, and then that would allow some other, like, everything to fall in place. But I can try to condense that, put that all together, and just send you an email about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilmember Baker. I wanted to get it out today just so we could get it for discussion at tonight's meeting. Like I said, I know there's been interest by members of the public to have that changed. I know that Councilmember Curly had also expressed interest in doing that, but I'll make sure.
Yeah, it was just a little covering some, you know, little pesky things. That's all.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? We'll move into new business, approve hourly rate increase proposed by Labor Council. Anyone like to make a motion or open up with a comment? All right. Well, just so the folks know at home, if you haven't seen the agenda, I don't, every so often, Shiftman Fournier comes to us asking for a rate increase. They're asking us to increase it $20 to $185 an hour. I will make a motion to approve that effective January 1st, 2026.
Support.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
All right. Moving on to item B, discussion on contract for general maintenance services. Ms. Jaren?
It's right there still.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I can't see you over there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I placed this item on the agenda today because the contract for general maintenance services, or more commonly known as the Parks Contract, is set to expire on April 30th, 2026. So for the past 10 years, we contracted out much of the work in the parks, major road medians, municipal buildings, and city-owned lots. I have a more detailed list of that work in the emails that I've sent you. So rather than extending the contract or going back out to bid, we looked at what this contract has cost us in the past compared to bringing it back into the House, bringing it back to the DPW. So with adding three full-time labors and three part-time labors to our DPW staff, we could bring this service back in-house, as well as adding some small maintenance work inside of the buildings with a significant savings to the city. And again, those numbers are in the emails that I sent, Council. The reason for the possible budget amendment on this or adjustment is due to the remaining two months of work until the new budget starts. So basically, the contract ends on April 30th, and our new budget doesn't start until June, so we got to get through May and June. There may be a transfer of funds from the contractor's budget to the new labors, or just a budget amendment. And that's it. With that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. With that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
For Mr. Albright, I don't think we necessarily need to take action on it. I think administration was just seeking feedback from council, is that right?
This was just scheduled as a discussion item this evening.
Well, I appreciate that you took a look at this. I know we've discussed for years, bringing some of the services back in-house that we had to lose after 2008. And I think when you have our city employees invested in, you know, the work that they do with maintaining our parks and such, I think it pays off, so I'm happy to see us move forward in this direction.
Yeah, I, I would simply say that knowing Darren's character, what he writes as a memo and say that we could save $130,000, $130,000 a year, we don't need a discussion.
Thank you. For such a small discussion, I put a lot of work into it.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, and just for the record, Darren did speak very highly of J.J. Mitch and the relationship that they've had over the years, but this is just done as a cost savings, and a very big cost savings, and it seems to just make sense with what you provided to us in the emails. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item C, discussion and possible motion on Nine Mile, Phase Three.
All right, I added this to the agenda, and I had a few discussions, like many of us have, with residents who said that they would like to just see which direction we were going to go in, they would like everything to be done, so this is why I added it to the agenda, to make it official. Everyone spoke on how they felt about it, and so with that, just listening to the residents, the business owners, I would like to move that we would move forward with the already approved five-lane design for Nine Mile, and that we would end discussion of road diet on Nine Mile, and that all costs associated with the three-lane design be provided to us, if possible, at our next meeting or the meeting after, and that would be my motion about that. Just basically to move forward with the already approved five-lane design. I know there was discussion also about the median, but I feel like we can revisit that and, because I have a few questions about that, but I would like to go forward with that five-lane design and just end all discussion about road diet on Nine Mile and a roundabout. And that's my motion.
I'll support that motion, but, Mr. Mayor, it says discussion and possible motion. We don't need any discussion. We've had discussion from our citizens, and that's the important discussion that we're listening to, so. One of the participants of hearing the public mentioned the roundabout. I can either add that to your motion or make a separate motion that there shall not be any roundabouts installed in the entire city of East Point.
That was part of my motion. I moved that we move forward with the already approved five-lane design and that we end discussion, that there is no more discussion on road diet or roundabout.
Okay, all right. I'll support the motion. I would ask our city attorney, you heard the motion, does that cover our butts?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I got to ask.
So I would like to say just a couple of things. I want to acknowledge that this has been a very aggravating and contentious topic over the last year, and I've been, it weighs on me when I see residents either on Facebook or in-person who are either kind of taking digs at each other or dogging on the city. I don't mind it so much when someone could decide, for all of us up here, we kind of sign up for that. But this topic got really hot, so I just, from my perspective, I learned a lot from this experience. I learned how not to roll out a large project or change in the city. It just seemed like it got away from us, and before, there could even be really much discussion on it, people were already fighting over it, and going forward, as we look forward to other things we're going to do in the city in the future, I'd like everyone to keep in mind what they want to see, you know, come up with ideas, come bring ideas to council. I certainly want to have discussions sooner rather than later for anything like this going forward, so just, I guess, my commitment to everyone is, I learned a lot from it, I intend to try to sort of navigate issues a little bit better going forward. That said, I agree that it's time to have a decision because I think this conversation really just has dragged on for too long, and I'd like to see people looking forward to something positive instead of arguing over something that they feel angry about. So, that said, Councilman Baker, I was actually going to suggest amendment or adding something to your motion. I'd like to direct, part of the thing that was very aggravating during this conversation was getting answers from AEW or from MDOT about timelines, about exactly where things were going, so adding to that, directing AEW to submit those plans to MDOT and get the green light to go out to bid with that project.
Okay, I'm just going to ask for some, just, it might be, just for some clarity, as far as just moving forward with what I proposed, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and so they're essentially waiting, I think, to hear from our engineers, and so I want to set in stone that our engineers by the end of this week, reach out and just let them know and move forward.
I just wanted to make sure I was saying that, yeah, I would amend my motion to include that, and just for clarity, when I asked for like the breakdown of the costs associated with the three-lane design, this has been a question that's been going on for a while, and I know there is a lot of cost associated with that. There's engineering costs, there's staff costs, there is the publication cost that, you know, that the clerks have to put out, you know, and I know there's a lot of man-hours that's involved in that, and I believe things with DPW and so forth and so on, economic development, so just so we'll now know what that, what that cost is because people want to know that, I think that's fair. So that's why I just asked for that to be added to, but, yeah, I will amend my motion also as you've asked. Thank you.
Just a personal comment, how long, how long have we been waiting for a response from the state concerning Nine Mile Road? You know, it just makes me mad. I don't know if they're playing games or not. I would like to think they are not playing games, but I don't believe that they are not playing games, and it doesn't matter now, after tonight with our vote, it doesn't matter. But they only had two decisions to make, five lanes or three lanes.
As soon as we vote.
And I hope, I hope somebody's listening that will call the state and say, "You should have heard what Harvey Curly said."
I'll call him.
Okay.
All right, do you still, do you support with that amendment, Councilman Curly?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yes. It would have been nice, first of all, if we had a representative from AEW here tonight. I think that would have been beneficial to have somebody here. Very disappointed that Ryan's not here today. I'd like to address the fact that the five-lane is not just a rip-out-and-replace, folks. It does alter the structure of the road, it does impact businesses. Many businesses have come forward before and told us that, you know, hey, we didn't think this was going to happen, you know, that it does impact it, so, you know, I personally would like to retain and attract businesses in our community. We need them. We need businesses here. You know, we appreciate those that are here, that are in our community. I'd like to see more come to East Point and, you know, join us in our community. I think it's a great place. I'd love to see more businesses here. I can't support this because of that very reason, as well as the fact that I do believe there is a group out there as well who have not maybe been as vocal as the negative that are in favor of it. There was even a Facebook post the other day about businesses and how to attract businesses in our community, and, you know, some of them were talking about walkability and having, like, you know, outdoor patios and things like that to make it more, you know, inviting and encouraging our businesses to come here. So I cannot support this, I will not, but I just want to mention it because, you know, I do feel bad for some of those businesses that will have that impact on the road. Like, again, it's not just a rip-out-and-replace, it will have an impact on, you know, front parking, and I can't think of the name of it right now, probably saying her name wrong, and I apologize. I think it's Rosita's, right on Nine Mile, she's near one of the side streets in Phase Three, that would be impacted by this in particular, that I can just think of off the top of my head.
I can, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I think one of the best ways, in my opinion, and this is only my opinion, is if we want to attract good businesses, I think they need to see us supporting the ones that we have here, and especially in that area where the road diet would go in. We talk about walkability, but you have driving-based businesses there, you have an urgent care, you have a CVS pharmacy, you have a couple drive-through restaurants. I think if they see us supporting the businesses that we have, I think that would be more attractive than to see us ignoring the ones that have come forward time and time again. So I can respect having a difference of opinion about it, but that's just my perspective of it, so.
I support the motion to end the road diet and go with the five-lane design.
All right, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to approval of special event application. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the special event application for CNS Healthcare Turkey Giveaway on November 22nd, contingent upon the application taking the appropriate steps to ensure that any necessary emergency traffic is not blocked or impeded.
A second. Any questions?
Not a question, but people don't know necessarily where CNS Healthcare is, so anyone that's interested in going there to pick up a turkey, it's on Kelly Road, 1-2-3-3-1. 1-2-3-3-1, Kelly Road.
No, no, 2-1-3-3-1, 2-1-3-3-1.
2-1-3-3-1.
You said 1-2, you transpose the first two.
I did?
Yeah.
Well, you, Harvey, 2-1-3-3-1, wow. This is a wonderful event, isn't it? That they would go out and buy, I don't know how many turkeys they're going to give away, but, wow, that's what America's all about, helping someone else.
300 turkeys.
I'm sorry, what?
300.
300.
300, that's wonderful, wow. 300, okay, that's just my sideline.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
All right, pay rolling bills. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we pay the bills in the amount of $2,869,430.71.
Support.
All right, are there any questions on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. All right, we will move into the second hearing of the public, which is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, just a quick comment, I guess I'm part of the motion that I wasn't expecting tonight, a ban on, complete ban on road diets and roundabouts. We've actually done a road diet in the city. I don't know why this project has turned into such a crazy issue. Cities all around us across the country do road diets all the time. We did a road diet on Old Eight Mile, went four lanes to three lanes. Nobody was upset at that time. I haven't heard anyone talking about traffic on Old Eight Mile. These are normal planning, like best planning practices across the country to do things like this, to create downtowns or attract more business and just create like a more walkable community. Communities shouldn't just be all about just cars. There are other things to communities, so to not do any road diets in the future at all, I think, especially if there's shorter streets like Old Eight Mile or something, makes complete sense, or roundabouts are very, very popular now, too. You don't have to purchase streetlights, which are very expensive. We saw, I think it was three sets of them, it was $800,000. The ones on Kelly, I think that was that last number, which was hundreds, thousands higher than we even originally had a couple years before that last one. So now, we're just going to arbitrarily just put ourselves in that corner of having no road diets or roundabouts just because we're upset about one project and just don't even want to consider it in future things where it could make sense. I don't know, just disappointed here. I'm obviously just here as a resident, you know, I'm here for free, just like the rest of all of you, and just think it would be good for the community. Certainly don't plan on running for city council again, so I'm not up here trying to, you know, in two years, hopefully it goes a different way. I'd like to just see good things happen in the community, so that is all. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Walter Jacobia, East Point resident, for a full year, we got a taste of what three lanes looked like, you know, when they were working on Nine Mile, two lanes, three lanes. It was stupid. I mean, the traffic backups, trying to get, trying to make a left-hand turn from either the north side or the south side on the Nine Mile was almost impossible. And I think after a year of that, I didn't want to see a road diet ever. Now, as far as a roundabout on Channel Two today, they mentioned the three worst places in Macomb County for accidents. One of them was 18 and a half in Van Dyke. If you know anything about that area, that's a big roundabout. There is no buildings, it's all road, and the problem with roundabouts is people don't know how to traverse them. So I mean, no roundabouts, ever. I don't ever want to see a roundabout again, period, because it's dumb. And as far as a road diet goes, I'll be fine if I don't ever hear or see one of those again, because it just doesn't work. You know, you guys just didn't listen to the police and fire and ambulance service, okay? I think there would have been accidents, I think it would have been a terrible idea, and because I live right there, I did not want to see one. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mary Hall Rayford, East Point resident, I'm going to read this, because if I try to do it without doing so, I might get a little emotional. But for all who see others, and I mean others, people who look like me and we're called others, I've learned a lot. Those who don't want to acknowledge racism have not recognized they are racist. Those who don't want to recognize fascism are fascists. Those who won't recognize they hate for no reason are hypocrites. They sit in churches on a regular basis, never understanding God's word, His word that says, "We are to love everyone." I'm so glad He loves me, and I'm so glad that He has placed in my heart the ability to love others. Whether I like them or not, I know how to love, and we all need to learn how to love. And we all need to learn how to love, so we can get along. This is a problem. And when I spoke earlier about hypocrisy, there are people who will smile and grin in your face and stab you in the back. That's that hypocrisy I was referring to. We don't need that. If you don't like me, leave me alone. It's not a problem. I can keep going my way and you keep going yours. But we have to be in a position to love all. I am a human being with morals and principles, not hate. And I never want to reach a place where I feel like I can tell anyone that I hate them, because that would truly destroy my faith in me and God's love for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Pointe resident. Thank you, Mayor Proton Baker, for putting this on the agenda tonight. And I didn't hear your motion as being that till the end of time, there could never be another road diet or roundabout in the city. I think we were talking about Nine Mile and for the near future with Nine Mile, so I don't think anything is set in stone until the end of time. Thank you, Mayor Kleinfeld, for expressing your thoughts on the situation and recognizing that it's caused a lot of aggravation and unrest, I would say, within the city. And, you know, people are serious. I feel like we've been gaslighted for quite some time with this silent majority that never comes forward to speak on it, never bothers to send emails to the city, and apparently couldn't make it to the polls to vote. It's a clear message that this silent majority is maybe an invisible majority and not a majority at all. And as far as your veiled threats about businesses and they don't realize what a five-lane plan will mean to them, we went through this with East Detroit Bakery and the Chichinis. And with them, with their parking, they're in line with what MDOT approves. Our ordinances are a little different. And I would think that with construction, if a five-lane plan was going to impact parking that people already have, that we would do something to accommodate them and not punish them or penalize them, because someone didn't get their way about a road diet. It's just, again, very, very, very poor, poor attitude that I'm seeing. So hopefully, we can move forward and stop dividing people. And, you know, we had an election, we have a brand-new council member. I'm very happy to see you. I have spoken with you before. I do think that you are excellent for the position. I feel that your values are in line with the city of East Pointe and a family town. Being a mother and an educator, I think that you bring a lot to the table here. So I don't want you to think that you were elected as a negative vote to someone else. You were elected on your merits as well. But, you know, with that being said, let's move forward, fresh start. We have a brand-new council, and let's just stop agitating people. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Solera, Kelly Road. I can identify with your statements about MDOT. I actually do hear that those parking lots in Lansing, you can turn them into basketball courts. There's nobody in those buildings. They're all working from home in their pajamas. So maybe that's why you can't get an answer out of them. And that's why I think we need restrictions on what these councils can do with this money. Police chief, in Texas, a truck driver got in an accident and killed some people. And he had a CDL from the Secretary of State in Michigan. So we have drivers all around us that have, they can't read, they can't write English, and they're on the streets out there. So I'd like to address this council's not addressing security in their planning. It makes no sense. We've got this immigrant problem, and some people say I'm a racist. But I've always been called a racist, ever since Obama's been around. He tended to label his opposition racist. But we need a cooperation agreement with our police department with ICE. That does not mean that ICE is in the city. It just means they have avenues to work with the city. They may even get some funding out of ICE. And the immigrant problem is not going to go away. And I am separating the immigrants from our black population. Black Americans are not immigrants. The operations being done by Trump is against immigrants, illegal immigrants. Everybody broke the law when they crossed the border. So that's the way that goes. And we need to direct, we need to address that. We have people on the road that can't read and write. We have crime. We have 300,000 missing children that the Democrats brought in under Biden. Our police force can't find those children.
30 seconds.
They need federal help. Where they are, who's pimping them, I don't know. Nobody knows, maybe. We're going to have to root them out one by one. And I'll leave it at that. And, well, I agree that racism can be a problem, but we have racism in this chamber tonight. We have a young lady here who has been run out of her job. And we have, we're called a DEI city.
Thank you very much.
Don't know what DEI means, but...
Anyone else?
I appreciate this gentleman's support, and I would like to again reiterate my request to this board that they would vote to release the investigative report in totality, in the spirit of being transparent. And I'd like to, since he mentioned Barack Obama, I'd like to make a quote from Barack Obama. He says, "We're still fighting to make sure that basic anti-discrimination laws are enforced, not just at the federal level, by the way, but throughout government and throughout the private sector." And those are fights that we can win, because, and this is where I do believe America has changed, the majority, not by any means 100%, but the majority of Americans believe in the idea of non-discrimination. And based on my experience here, we need to examine our ideas relative to employment and discriminatory practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right.
CNS Healthcare, sounds like an oxymoron to me, because they failed to, I don't know, consult with nutritionfacts.org. While animal protein intake is generally associated with weight gain, poultry such as turkey appears to be the worst associated with 40% more weight gain than red meat or processed meat. When it comes to turkey, however, gaining a few extra pounds isn't the only concern. With a high fat content, poultry appears to promote diabetes and the development of pancreatic cancer more than any other animal product, potentially raising one's risk of pancreatic cancer by 72% for every 50 gram increase in daily poultry consumption. Turkey consumption may also cause rapid uptake and accumulation of the neurotoxin hormone linked to essential tremor, cancer, and Parkinson's disease. Turkey meat may contain toxic chemicals and life-threatening bacteria. Processed turkey meat appears to come prepackaged with cancer-causing agents containing dangerously high levels of nitro-samens, the chemical compounds considered to be the most carcinogenic agents in cigarette smoke. Workers in poultry slaughtering and processing plants have significantly increased risk of dying from certain cancers, including those of the cervix, penis, liver, and pancreas, a phenomenon that might be explained by the increasing presence of cancer-causing viruses in poultry products. Men who regularly consume poultry have four times greater risk of developing prostate cancer compared with non-poultry eaters. Turkey feed often contains antibiotics, which may foster the growth of multidrug-resistant pathogens, including E. coli and salmonella, which causes more deaths and hospitalizations than any other foodborne illness. I mean, I could go on and on and on. Let's see. Let's see. Furthermore, many birds are fed arsenic-containing drugs, apparently converted by cooking into carcinogenic inorganic arsenic compounds, the harmful effects magnified by feeding poultry the leftover guts, heads, feet, manure, and feathers of other slaughtered birds, which are often laden with arsenic, in turn, leading to arsenic exposure in humans who eat meat. Sliced turkey has also been found to be contaminated with the dangerous chemical BPA found in...
Yeah, 30 seconds.
...which has been linked to diabetes, erectile dysfunction, and our nation's number-one killer cardiovascular disease. This is what you all just voted for in going through with the special permit to let this so-called healthcare give away 300 slaughtered turkeys. I'm going to end with this. There are no immigrants in this country. This country was stolen from the Native Americans by white European settlers. No immigrants are here.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. Let's start with Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Yeah, just briefly, I want to recognize gentleman, Mr. Isaiah Hood. He's doing, I was introduced to him very recently. We've talked quite a bit. He's working, doing some work with a group called the Better Detroit Youth Movement, a longtime friend of mine for, I think it was over, I think it's been over 30 years now, introduced me to Mr. Hood. And just a little bit about the Better Detroit Youth Movement, some of the things that they do, they provide access to essential skills and knowledge in financial literacy, real estate education, entrepreneurship, technology development, community service, and leadership. And so he came here to observe what we do, like how our council meeting runs. He has an interest in politics and other things that he does, like with the community. And so we've just been sharing ideas, and he gets to see a little bit of what I, what we do, not what I do, but what we do up here. And I've been talking with him about some things that he's getting into, so I just wanted to recognize him for coming out. Also, in keeping with the spirit of my word of the day, I had one today, and, you know, sometimes I try to do something positive. Sometimes it's things to consider, things to do, sometimes it's things not to do. So my word for today was perfidious. Perfidious. And that just simply means not true in one's allegiance to someone or something. It kind of coincides with what Ms. Mary Hall Rayford said, and I promise you, we did not plan that. I did not know that she was going to speak and say what she did. But it's just one thing, if we, you know, be true to who we are. If we say we're for something, let's be for it. If we're in somebody's corner, let's do that. If we're not, let's not tell them that we're, that we are and we're not. Let's not wear a mask and try to hide who we really are. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Curley.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we pretty much agreed to have a new police department and a court building to be built. But I think we're missing something, and I want to put this on the agenda next week. And I don't, I don't know if I need a motion, I can just request that it would be put on the agenda. And that's building a gun range building next to the building that'll be housed by the police and the court. We haven't officially talked about how we're going to pay for all this, but I'm assuming it's going to be some type of a bond. But we haven't sat here, the five of us, and discussed it yet. So if we put that on, if I put this on the agenda next meeting and it passes, then the administration can go out and find out what the cost would be and the whole decision about the gun range. You know, we had a brief discussion, and there were some comments saying, "Well, it costs too much." Well, what we're doing right now, we're sending our police officers out of town, and it's costing money. We have to pay a charge for them to come there and use the gun range. So at the time, it's, we're going to get a lot of that money back that it's going to cost to build the gun range. So, council, without objection, I guess Kim would take that note, that we put it on the agenda. Thanksgiving is coming up, isn't it? And most of us will go out and maybe go to mom and dad's, or grandma and grandpa, and our kids. And some of us will stay home and have people come to our house. And you need to know that there's more than 177,000 troops that are stationed throughout the country, throughout the world. And on Thanksgiving Day, they'll sit at long tables, and most of them will have a Thanksgiving But they're not going to be with mom and dad, or grandpa and grandma, or their wife, or their husband. They're going to be there. So we need to think about that. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do, I'm going to do something that you're probably going to get a few phone calls and say that... I wasn't looking at it. What did he do, go like that? So, and I may get a feedback, but I'm going to do it anyway, because my heart is telling me to do it. So Heavenly Father, we would ask that you would be with those more than 177,000 men and women who are protecting this country. Be them on our Thanksgiving Day, particularly those who will get up Friday morning and put their combat uniform on and go out to protect the borderlines for our country. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Shadlick?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that's it.
Councilwoman Scott?
I am so excited to actually have my voice back. Last week, I had no voice, so I'm so happy that I am able to actually speak out to everybody. I'd like to thank everybody who congratulated me today. I really appreciate it. I know I also assigned an assignment to the sixth graders to actually watch the city council meeting, so I think they kind of learned a lot of interesting information today, so I'm looking forward to actually seeing them tomorrow. I actually also had the opportunity to actually attend my first library commission meeting today, and I got to see all the new desks we got. And they will also be having a book sale Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so I would like to tell everybody to come out and go purchase one of those books at the library. And also, they taught me so much about Hoopla, so they have a new program that you can actually download DVDs, books, directly to your smart TV phone. You have instant access to it. I find that to be extremely amazing. And so if they're checked out of the library, you really won't have to worry about that. I'm just encouraging everybody to go check out the East Pointe Library and support them out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Walter, I appreciated your comments, but of course, no hard feelings. And I'm excited about our new city manager. I think everyone else, if you haven't watched our interviews, I think you'll be impressed when you see him get here and start working with the city. And with that, I will enter... And with that, uh, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to uh, MCL fifteen point two six eight one D.
So, a support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bishadlik?
Yes.
Great, going to closed session at eight twenty-six. No, actually, if you wanna... All right, going into open session at 8:49. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:49.